I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tonight, we have presentations of colors from the Roberson High School. It's instructed by Colonel Tom Bell of the U.S. Air Force, retired. Please rise.
All right. Mark one. Mark. Hold on. One. Ice. Present. Up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Up. Ice. Ice. Over. Up. Hold on. Up.
I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence and remember the people down east who are having a difficult time. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda. Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, it's time for superintendent's comments.
I want to thank all of our principals, teachers, and students across the district for a very smooth start to the 2019-2020 school year. There are so many moving parts to creating a good transition back, but the key is starting day one with classrooms where quality instruction and learning is prioritized. And Board, I can certainly attest to what I've witnessed in being in a number of schools and along with our leadership team. That's certainly what we witnessed in all of our schools. So, thank you once again. Our 2018-2019 school performance results were approved yesterday by the State Board of Education. And as I said before, said this last year, we set a very high standard of performance and growth during the 17-18 school year. This year, we felt slightly short of meeting that standard. Thirty-two of our 42 schools either met or exceeded their growth targets, and this compared to 36 schools achieving or exceeding growth projections the previous year. School performance grades were distributed as follows. Two schools received As, 17 received Bs, 20 acquired Cs, three received D grades, and one school obtained an F designation. And as you may recall, school performance grades are determined using a 15-point scale. And I do want to thank the General Assembly because now that has 15-point scale has been made permanent. It also includes a formula that is weighted 80% proficiency and 20% growth, and we hope that in the future, additional wisdom will take place in terms of changing that formula as well. While we recognize and have calls to celebrate a number of successful results, and that includes six of our high schools that matched an A or B grade performance with met or exceeded growth status, we share the disappointment of our first school to receive a failing grade and low-performing designation. I know that all of you Board members have visited Johnston Elementary School, and several of you serve in a fairly consistent role as a volunteer reader or student mentor. And I believe that you would agree with me wholeheartedly that Johnston's, as well as Oakley's, Irwin Middle's, and Avery's Creek's classrooms have extremely dedicated teachers, professionals, educators, and along with the students truly want to successfully learn. Within all schools across the district, I strongly believe in this back-to-basic approach to balanced literacy instruction. That's at the core of what has made this system the system that it has been historically, and it's a key to achieving district-wide success. When instructional rigor and high student expectations are prioritized, growth will take place. And once growth takes place, then increased proficiency will follow. I believe that strongly. It is not unreasonable to expect each of our schools in this school system to successfully meet or exceed annual growth targets for their student populations. And regarding growth, I'm pleased to note that seven of our schools, Nesbit Discovery, Owen and Inca High Schools, North Buncombe Middle, North Windy Ridge, West Buncombe and North Buncombe Elementary Schools, all exceeded their annual growth targets for the second year in a row. And I had an interesting conversation with one of our high school principals today that's here, Ms. Sellers. Reynolds High School achieved probably the best performance and growth stats that they've had in a long, long time. So, congratulations as well to our high schools, to all of our high schools. Congratulations for leading the way this year. Ten years ago, we as a school system placed global education as a priority initiative in our schools. One aspect of that initiative was to provide dual-language classrooms for grades K through five in at least one school per each of our six districts, and we've now successfully accomplished that goal. Another global ed component consisted of bringing international teachers into our classrooms to share not only a different world language, but a diversity of cultures. This year, we have 35 international teachers. They come from countries such as Colombia, Mexico, Chile, Peru, Ecuador, Venezuela, China, and Spain. And most recently, we have had seven more educators receive their North Carolina Global Education Digital Badge. And that brings our total to over 30-plus teachers in this school system that are either currently working or have obtained that particular achievement. And so, we're very, very proud of that. Finally, I want to remind you on your calendars that you have next Tuesday, our Annual Teacher of the Year banquet will take place. It'll be at Celine &amp; Company. That's on Broadway Street. It begins at 6:30. And I think you will especially enjoy the wonderful video that will recognize our seven finalists that our communications team and Ben Ricker put together. And so, we always look forward to that. That's going to be a wonderful event. And finally, I want to add another event that's going to take place on Sunday, September 29th, and I would encourage you, if you have time, to participate, and that's the Crop Walk. It will take place at St. Mark's Lutheran Church on North Liberty Street. Registration's at 1:30 that afternoon, and I think it's a two-and-a-half-mile walk. I don't know if Lisa's paying Lisa's there, two-and-a-half-mile walk? And it is all about hunger relief awareness, but the wonderful thing is a portion of those donations will come back into our fund to be used at some part, some portion of the year for assisting with paid lunches and assisting with those challenging situations. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Good News.
Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This evening for our Good News segment, we'd like to call down our CFO, Deborah Frisbee. She's here to tell us about a couple of recent awards that her department has earned for excellence in financial reporting.
We appreciate this recognition. Every year, we promote financial transparency, so we submit our comprehensive annual financial report for these two awards, and we were lucky enough to receive them again for 2018. So, I would be remiss if I didn't mention this is a team effort, either on the front end of my department or the back end. And I'm trying to respect my department's time. So, I did not ask them to come tonight, but what we're going to do is we're going to have a photo op next week where everybody will be in the picture, and then we'll publish it on the website because they work so hard during the day, and they have small kids and kids and sporting events and things like that. So, I'm trying to be respectful of that time. But I will bring down Ms. Tina Thorpe and Tiffany since they are here and just give them recognition too because, again, this is a team effort. It's a pretty lengthy process. We choose to do it because we want to promote financial transparency, and so, we have received this award for several years in a row, and we're grateful for that. And our auditors also help with preparing some of the information, so... But thank you for the recognition. We do truly appreciate it. So, you all want to say anything?
I just want to say thank you to Ms. Frisbee for her leadership. She goes above and beyond daily with a great team, so I'm very happy to be working here, and it's just been a blessing.
Thank you.
I definitely echo what Tina just said in regards to Deborah. She is a wonderful leader. She's always there for us, and she supports us in every way, shape, and form. So, we appreciate that, and I think that the rest of us, by the time we all get together, would say the same.
It's just hard in the past when we've had these recognitions for everybody to be here, and I think I want everybody in that photo op. So, with y'all's blessing, we're going to do that next week during the day while we're all here, and then we're going to publish it on the website for a day or two.
We'll check and roll.
Right. Thank you again for your recognition, not necessary.
Thank you for your work. And... Come on, everybody.
That one's heavy.
Just go. I don't care.
Yeah, she walked up. And there.
Come on. Are the plaques right side up? Are they signed up? Miss Moneybags and her crew. Our curriculum feature is next on the agenda. We're going to talk about early childhood grants. Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, members of the Board, tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our youngest children in our community, and we're going to focus on what does the early childhood footprint look like in Buncombe County schools. You're aware that we have CTE childcare facilities at AC Reynolds High School, Irwin High School, and TC Roberson High School. We have Southwestern Child Development, who has a childcare center for some of our students to benefit from at Community High School, and we have 16 Head Start classrooms. So, we have a nice footprint for our early children. However, we need more, and so, aligning our priorities with the Buncombe County Commissioners' priorities are the next steps, and that's what the grant's about that we're going to talk about this evening. So, the Buncombe County Early Childhood Development Fund was created by our county commissioners as a way to have a systems approach, a systems approach to early childhood education. It's, the goal is to have equal opportunity for families to access high-quality childcare. We know that the first 2,000 days matter, and that's the time from which a child is born to a child walks through our kindergarten door. And those 2,000 days are critical to the development that we see later in the school years. So, they made funding available, and we jumped on that and said, "We would like to accomplish a couple of things." We would like to have consistency in our CTE programs and advance those into the schools that do not have CTE sites, and that would be North Buncombe and Owen High School and Inca High School. So, we wrote a grant to ask for those to be funded. And then, we also found a new partner in our community that we wanted to work with, which is Werner, and we're going to talk about what was funded and what those projects look like. So, we have our first one that was accepted. Our grant was a very large grant, and the county commissioners had 3.6 million, and we asked for most of that to open our pipe dreams. That was not funded this first year, so we did get funding for North Buncombe High School and our Emma project. So, that's the totals. And Taylor Baldwin, our new CTE director, is going to talk about what the CTE project will look like at North Buncombe High School, and then we'll talk a little bit about the Emma Werner project.
Good evening. I want to first start out with where we are right now with the North Buncombe project. So, we have hired a director for our childcare center, Anita King, who is the current director at AC Reynolds High School. She's got eight years' experience at AC Reynolds High School with that childcare center. She will start second semester, so she will be with AC Reynolds High School until second semester hits, when hopefully, we can get the project on its way and open, grand opening. During that time in second semester, our early childcare center directors have two ECE courses that they teach. The other two planning periods are spent running the childcare center itself. The architectural plans, and Clark's been working very hard on getting this up and going and out for bid. We are using internal classrooms that existed in North Buncombe High School. The original proposal was to have a mobile unit outside, so we have scratched that, and we will be inside the school with that, with an extension of the playground that comes outside. And I'm going to show you guys here in a second what the plans look like. The childcare center is going to enroll children from the ages of two to five. We have 15 spots available at North Buncombe High School, and we are going to adhere to the equitable selection process during that time. So, during this layout, and I've, hopefully, you guys can see most of this up here, you will see on the right side, our playground area that has been pushed out from the side of the school. The inside area is going to be renovated. That's going to give us areas for the childcare center for the children to be in. And then, on the left side, we're going to have an area for the students to actually have a classroom space. In between those, and this is what's really nice about the layout, when the students enter the classroom, they're going to have an observation area that actually looks out onto the childcare center. It's not going to be separate from the classroom itself. Down below that is the kitchen area, and then also is going to have a bathroom area for the children and also for the students and staff there. And Clark, I want to applaud Clark because Clark's done a great job working with Anita King on this and getting the layout done to specs and under budget. So, we appreciate all the work that they put into that, but I think with this layout, this is going to be a fabulous childcare center. The uses of funds, we are going to have to, we've already hired a director. We are going to have to hire a lead teacher that's going to be there with that director. The classroom instructional supplies, the furniture and equipment, and we are going to work really well with Clark about getting the furniture and equipment to stay under budget with that. The childcare center licensure fees, and there is, there's a bunch of permits and licensure fees that we're going to have to go after. Some of those take time, so we've tried to stay ahead of the game and apply for those upfront. The professional development for the teachers, there's some opportunities for Ms. King to go out and receive some more certifications and do some more work with her PD. Renovation of the classroom space, that's the bulk of what the funds are being used for. There's existing utilities and electrical and everything there that's going to have to be busted out and put new in. The technology that's going to go in, and thanks to Mr. Pace, he has helped us with all the security that's going to be going into the childcare center and then the playground area, and Clark's helped with that, too. So, what's next for us? From this point on, we do have to work on hiring that lead teacher. We want to make sure we get somebody in as soon as possible so they can work with that director prior to that opening of that childcare center. Enrollment of the students for early child, childhood education. We have put that out last year, and we're going to work on the marketing plan for that to increase the enrollment into those courses, but those will be the students who'll be interning actually in that facility. The background and fingerprinting for the ECE teachers and any of the students that are going to be in to the internship area in the childcare center. The updating, the commissioners' progress work, and we have deadlines. We'll meet with commissioners on the updates throughout this progress. We still are going to work on the demo and the renovation throughout this process and the furniture and equipment. The marketing piece of this is going to be very big for us when we start looking at bringing the children into the career, or the career, the childcare center. We are going to get out there and start marketing at the open houses, and we have a plan put together to make sure that's equitable that the community can see. But the tentative grand opening for this is going to be set for second semester, so that gives Clark enough time to get it done. Oh, yeah. So, that's all I've got now for...
Pressure, Mr. Wyatt.
That's all I've got now for the North Buncombe project.
Do you have specific questions for Taylor?
One, so you showed the bullet points of where the money's going. How much of the, how are we, is part of the grant money paying for the change in the facility?
Yes.
So, it's, I mean, that doesn't seem like-
I'll get back to that right there.
...a lot of money. Is that grant, is that a one-year grant?
It is a one-year grant. $400,000 to update this classroom.
To keep the program going, have you got to go back and reapply for the grant on an annual basis or some lower level of the grant, or how will that work?
Once the childcare is open and fully stocked with students and supplies, then we can manage it from year to year, just as we do the other projects.
Internally, okay.
I have another question. So, at Reynolds High School, our childcare center, we have a lot of kids of faculty in the building, and so, it's another benefit we can offer to our employees. I'm assuming that will be the same at North Buncombe?
That will be the same there.
Yeah. So, that's, it's another, in terms of attracting and retaining excellent teachers, it's another benefit for the school system as well.
We did list in the grant that it's a retention strategy for us, but we also want to make it accessible for those in the community. The difference with these projects, it's really a learning lab, and we're really targeting workforce development. So, we're hopeful that these ECE students will be successful, enjoy that line of work, and then continue through AB Tech and become licensed because there are jobs everywhere.
I'm going to add on to that, too. When they complete ECE too, those students are capable to go in as a lead teacher to a daycare. So, they work on their credentials throughout those first and second levels.
And I just wonder, knowing what I know about sort of the pitiful state of pay levels throughout the county for early childhood professionals, you know, we work so hard to pay our teachers fairly, and I'm wondering what we as a board can do to advocate more broadly that early childhood professionals be compensated fairly as well. That seems very important to me if folks are going to stay in this career path.
It's certainly a conversation that we're having on all of the preschool task force meetings that we sit on because the pay, there's so many discrepancies. For example, in a Head Start classroom, that teacher's salary, that teacher has a BT certification or BK certification before kindergarten and kindergarten, and that person can work for us and receive a state salary of a teacher. Obviously, the Head Start Corporation, they don't have the funding to be able to pay the same, for the same degree. So, we have to have those conversations throughout the county so that we do see an increase in what's available for salary.
And if there's anything that this Board can do to help advocate for that, I, at least, I can only speak for myself, but I would certainly step up.
Absolutely. So, we're excited about the CTE portion. We are hopeful that this grant will be one that we will be able to renew each year or apply for new. So, we're looking for space at Inca High next, and our Owen students are working through a PACE, a PACE grant through AB Tech and Warren Wilson. So, our Owen ECE students are traveling to the Werner childcare facility for their internships. So, Owen is in a little bit of a unique situation, but Inca, we certainly see a need, and we would love to expand to the Inca campus, but there is not room inside the building right now. That location might have to have a modular if we were to be awarded a grant to move forward in that district. So, that's on our radar, Max. We are looking to having that childcare presence at Inca High School. So, our next grant that we wrote simultaneously was with our partner, and I'd like to recognize Marsha Whitney, who is here this evening. She is the president and CEO of Werner, and she has become a great partner with us. I had the opportunity to visit her center, the central center, which, or the center that is located near Warren Wilson, and they do such excellent work. It's quality childcare education, not just childcare, and they have a wonderful rainbow in the tummy lunch program, and it's a wonderful center. So, when they came to us and said, "What could we do together?", we really talked about, "How do we have a presence in some of our most challenged neighborhoods so that, and where do we have property?". So, that's where this public-private partnership began with a notion of, "Let's look to what Werner can do and what can we do together to benefit our children?". So, we have this Werner Emma childcare project, and the grant was $500,000 that we received, and that grant will be used to set up an infrastructure on the campus of Emma's school, and I'll show you a picture of that in just a minute, so that we can create high-quality learning environments for our youngest children who will then attend Emma Elementary. So, it's a private-public partnership. We hope to have up to 10 classrooms. We will have to phase the implementation because they are going to use modular classrooms. But if you think about the modulators that you've seen at Hall Creek, they're wonderful. They're, they're great learning spaces. They're bright. They're well-constructed, and they're very appealing. So, we're looking to see how those modulators can be incorporated in. We want to serve 84 children. So, imagine 84 of our youngest children throughout the Irwin District coming into that facility, and what will happen when they go right into kindergarten? They'll be so ready for kindergarten, it's exciting. It will be an additional opportunity for our Irwin High School ECE students to intern, even though they have a daycare on campus. This would be another option for them. And this grant, we have two years to use these dollars because it's going to take a little bit more time because of getting the infrastructure ready, doing the fundraising to get the modulators that Werner has to do and to be ready. So, you can see from this, the blue is where the modulators will be located. The building to the left where you see the roof, that's the gymnasium. So, it's really in that grassy area in front of the garden. If you've entered the bus lot, it will sit there. It's a nice, level space. Clark has looked at it. Ann and Pat have looked at it with Dr. Baldwin and myself, and we think it will fit very nicely. Need some infrastructure kinds of things done to make it accessible from coming down Louisiana and not entering the bus traffic, but that's all in part of the site design. So, how are we using that $500,000, starting with the design fees that have to be done? Preparation of the site is big as any construction project will tell. The infrastructure, making sure that we have the power and the sewer, even though it's coming from Emma, there's still work to do, and especially because it's Asheville City Limits, the permitting is big. A new playground, fencing, a new entry drive coming off of that road, as I mentioned, decks and ramps, security, all of those things will play into what that $500,000 will be spent. Marsha and her board chair have met with us regularly, her staff, so we're all looking at what items need to be done so that both boards are comfortable moving forward. So, a lot of good collaboration. And we have a contract with the county that we're ready to submit that Chris has looked over. It's our typical contract that we do, and so, once that is in, then Clark can access the funds. So, that's where we are in terms of that. What's a little bit different about this project because- and ramps, security, all of those things will play into what that $500,000 will be spent. Marsha and her board chair have met with us regularly, her staff, so we're all looking at what items need to be done so that both boards are comfortable moving forward. So, a lot of good collaboration. And we have a contract with the county that we're ready to submit that Chris has looked over. It's our typical contract that we do, and so, once that is in, then Clark can access the funds. So, that's where we are in terms of that. What's a little bit different about this project because it's Buncombe County Schools' land, and it will be Werner's modular units. Campbell Shatley is helping us design an MOU and a land-site agreement, and that's what you will be presented to next month. We thought it important that you hear about this so you have context, and then when you see that next month, on next month's agenda, we will look at that more closely. We will report to the commissioners on a quarterly basis, and we're excited about the opportunity to move this partnership forward.
That's a large number of students.
It is, isn't it exciting?
Yeah.
It really is. It will fill such a need in that community.
For that community, right.
Other questions?
Maybe it's a question for Marsha. So, Werner's securing funds for modular units, is that a capital campaign? Is that other grants? Where is that funding coming from?
We are trying to get it through some large grant-funded sources. If we need to enter into a capital campaign, we will. We're already talking about it with major donors, et cetera, in case we need to go down that path, but we're hoping to do it with some large grant funds. Possibly even an additional grant from Buncombe County if, you know, we will apply certainly, and we don't know what their decision will be, we'll try that.
There were seventeen, excuse me, there were 12 new grants awarded this year and seven continuing grants. So, the county commissioners has been investing in early childhood, but they did make new dollars available, and they tell us they will do this every year.
So, I don't know where I need to direct. Anywhere you're done on that?
Yeah. Well, go ahead.
Sure. So, from a site work in early 2020, the half a million from the county is going into spending for that and permitting and all those other types of things. So, the money isn't secured as we're here today, there is not money to buy the modulators? Is that, did I hear that correctly?
We are actively working toward it, but that money is not yet secured.
Oh, thank you. That's correct. We are actively working towards securing those funds, but they are not currently secured.
So, if there's a, hopefully not, but if there were a delay, do we run into problems with the city and permits and how long they're good for? And, I mean, I just would want to make sure that the timing, we don't run into extra costs.
That's one reason the county commissioners, because the grant was not fully funded. We did ask for the full amount to do modulators and land prep. That's why they gave us an extra year. Most all of these grants funded were one-year awards, so we do have two because of that concern.
There are multiple pieces that might help to give you a little bit of more, I'm not comfortable yet either, but we're going to become comfortable over time because we're working on multiple different fronts to try to make sure that funding is acquired or financing is acquired. So, Werner will be made, we're going to be exploring the possibility of doing some financing arrangements if, with banking entities to see if there might be some options there. Currently, the children who are being served in three classrooms at Pisgah View Head Start and in one classroom at the YWCA, those are the children who critically need to be served most quickly at this new location. Because we're doing the modular design, we do have the option to phase in multiple chunks of modular design as fundraising is achieved over multiple years. So, the critical beginning point is really those four classrooms and the admin spaces to support them and the playground area, and of course, the design work that Clark is doing is all part of that. If we need to, we can phase it in over time. For example, one of the private family foundations that has said they are very interested in this project, I think they'll make a commitment, but we won't know until January. For them, it's easier to do funding over multiple years. So, if we're allowing a longer timeframe for completion of the project, if we can do it in three phases, then that will allow us to reduce the total costs, get some goals achieved and active in the children being served on a smaller scale, and then build up the impact as the months and years progress as additional funding is acquired. And right now, because Werner is in partnership with the YWCA for that one classroom and with community action opportunities for three classrooms, we have financial contracts with them. Once those contracts are ended, because we're actively open at this new location, we can allocate some of those contracted funds to the project, overall funding of this project and getting all of the funds need, funds met that we need for that project.
So, are you saying that children who are currently at the YW or in Head Start are going to leave where they are to come-
Correct.
And is that because those programs are shrinking?
Those programs are actually growing, so they want their space back.
Oh, I see.
So, they can increase, and that'll be an additional advantage for the community because they're going to be increasing childcare slots at those locations as well as the increase in childcare slots at this new location. So, it's all, it's all good, we're all, we're just trying to be, all working together in multiple partnerships and all be the water that's raising all boats for early education, the community on a variety of different fronts.
Well, and I would reiterate what you said earlier. If there's anything I think that this board can do to help, I know you're getting great help here, but if there's something that we can do from another level, Dr. Baldwin, I know we're in an interim phase with a development board, and I don't know if there's any way that, any kind of partnership that we can do in addition to this to help with that, because I would hate to see this start and then slow down.
I agree.
You know, this is long needed for a long time in this community, and anything we can do, I think all of us would agree to help, we would certainly try to do so.
Well, that's great, thank you. And we also, we're looking to partner in any way, even just one example I thought of as you were talking about, the CTE students at Inca. We have a Werner West right now. We're more than happy to partner and find ways we can work together to benefit those students' educational opportunities at that site, which already exists. We, I was, actually made myself a note to invite you all, to the extent it's, you know, Dr. Baldwin and Suzanne, Suzanne think it's, would be advantageous, the entire Board of Education, we'd love to get together with you all, just brainstorm opportunities to partner more together, to the extent that works within your processes. So, just know that's an open invitation if that were to be something you all would like to do. But yes, thank you for your support on that.
Thank you for that invitation, and I'm sure there's interest here on the board, Max.
Yes, I have a question, and this honestly is the first time I've heard the name of Werner Early Learning Center. And I would like you to clarify for me, are you all a nonprofit or for-profit? Are you a corporate entity, an arm of a corporate entity that's doing these things nationwide, or is it just locally? Could you clarify a little bit for me?
Sure. Werner is a nonprofit corporation, so we're a nonprofit 501(c)(3). We are the only early Head Start provider in Buncombe County. So, we serve a total of 262 children in three center, actually, if you count the YW classroom, in four locations, plus a very robust home-based program. We have 88 children in our home-based program. I'm forgetting the other parts of your question, so-
Well, that gives us information. You said in Buncombe County, but how far spread is Werner Learning Center? Is it nationwide?
We only serve, no, we only serve Buncombe County.
Just Buncombe County?
Correct.
So, it's unique to Buncombe County?
Correct. And you may remember, we rebranded, I believe it was in 2014, as Werner Center for Early Learning in honor of Danny and Hugh Werner, who had both passed away a few years prior to that. Before that time, we opened almost 20 years ago now as the Mountain Area Child and Family Center. So, you may be familiar with that entity. It's the same entity, we just rebranded, and I think it was 2014.
And you're primarily funded through fundraisings and philanthropists in the area that would contribute your cost.
We do get funding from every possible source, and early education program may get funding from. About three-fifths of our, our budget's about 4.3 million. About three-fifths of that is from early Head Start funds. We have two early Head Start grants. We get a small piece of funding from Child and Adult Care Food Program reimbursements. We get funding from NC pre-K. We have one NC pre-K classroom currently and hope to expand that, actually, at this location if we can. We also get subsidy reimbursements, and we also accept private pay children. So, we have some children who are just fully funded by their parents, who also may be eligible for subsidies. So, any four, and we also get many generous contributions from community members. So, we cobble it all together to do the very best we can to make it all work. It's a difficult business to be sustainable, but we do our best to do-
Well, that's where I was going with it. The next question is your sustainability, because we're talking about brick and mortar and kind of this relationship to establish these centers. However, the students coming, those 84 children, as far as the staffing of your centers and that kind of thing, it sounded like you've got multiple revenue streams, and you've been down that road before.
Yes, we know how to do this. Currently, of the 84 children that would be served-
Max, they know how to do that.
I believe them.
But it's tricky. This is a difficult business, it really is. Of the 84 children that will be served ultimately when this project is fully built, 32 are currently being served in those four classrooms. Each early Head Start classroom can have up to eight children. So, we already have the faculty serving three of those classrooms. When the one YW classroom joins us, currently it's YWCA staff, but we will add that staff. But we, we always have a balanced budget. We always strive to end with a surplus at the end of each fiscal year. We take fiscal sustainability very seriously, and that's why we're taking really smart, measured steps, talking with Suzanne and Clark and others about how do we make sure that we're doing this in a way that is reasonable, measured, smart, so that you all, as a board, will feel comfortable supporting this project, and our board, also at Werner, is comfortable supporting this project. Our board did discuss this at their August 15th board meeting, and we have a very detailed map for moving forward, which I'm sure Suzanne's happy to share with you, and that, our board at Werner voted to support that, even though there's a lot of unknowns in the plan, just because all the funding isn't in place yet, but we're doing this through smart, measured steps, but also really keeping our foot on the gas so we can move it forward as quickly as possible, because that's what's in the best interest of our children and families, and that's what's going to help all children who need critical early care and education services to be served. Even when this center's open, we're not going to be meeting all of the community's needs, but it'll certainly be a step in the right direction.
And Max, I can also add a little bit about the sustainability of Werner. I don't talk much about my day job when I'm here on the school board, but as some of you know, I co-lead an organization called Western North Carolina Nonprofit Pathways, which provides training and consulting for nonprofits across the 18 counties of Western North Carolina for just the reasons that you're talking about in terms of organizational sustainability and strength, so that they can continue to provide the critical programs. And Werner is one that has worked with Nonprofit Pathways a lot, and we have invested a lot of our resources in their leadership, training their board, and so on. And actually, I was just looking also at their list of board members, and their first vice president is Steve Sizemore, who formerly served on this board. So, he's got understanding of both, which is a great link. But, so personally, with my experience of nonprofits across this whole big region, this is one that I really strongly believe in, and I know from personal, professional experience about the strength of their operations and sustainability.
Thank you for that, Cindy. May I have one more question, Madam Chair? I heard in the presentation-
No, no, he didn't wait for me to say yes. He just went right on.
I heard in the presentation that you all have facilities, I think, maybe Reynolds High School, I think you have one-
Mm-mm, yes.
-daycare facility, and then I also heard, well, through the presentation, doing this at Emma, is there an advantage to having, is there some kind of advantage to having it at a high school campus versus elementary or vice versa? It would seem to me, and I had some experience in my career with early childhood education through AB Tech, one of the programs that I administered, but I say that just simply to say, it would seem like from the standpoint of playground equipment and things like that, age appropriateness would be geared more to the elementary school rather than the high school. Can you speak to that?
Well, if anyone else, feel free to jump in. My, the community at Emma, surrounding Emma Elementary School would very much benefit from this kind of an educational opportunity for their youngest residents. There are so many, and also, transportation is a real issue. So, one of, and our, we've been looking for a way to expand and unify our Werner Central operations that had been at Asheville City Preschool until Asheville City Preschool was expanding and needed their space back a little over a year ago, and that's what caused us to enter into the partnership on a temporary basis with Pisgah View Head Start and Community Action Opportunities. So, one of the things that we always are looking for, because at the moment, those four classrooms, the three at Community Action Opportunities and the one at the YW, those are early Head Start classrooms, and part of our requirement for our early Head Start grant is to be sure that we're serving the children and the communities most in need. And so, being on a bus line, there were a lot of different criteria that we needed and looked at, and this community and serving Emma in particular really fits all of those criteria, and it's easy enough access, I believe, for the high school students to come to us. And as Suzanne mentioned, we are always, Werner sees ourselves as, we want to be a resource in the community in a broad sense, and we actually are going to be going to Guatemala to build a Werner-like program in Guatemala in the coming year through some Rotary International funding. So, we always want what's in the best interest of childrens and families wherever they may be, and serving communities that are most in need, like the community surrounding Emma Elementary Schools, a great way to do that. And we're fortunate, we do have buses and transportation for our high school students that if a location is not on a high school campus directly, we can get those students to benefit from the educational opportunity with a pretty short bus ride. So, we, in talking with Suzanne and Dr. Baldwin, we looked at, and Clark, all of the different locations that, on different campuses, and this one seemed to be the best place to start with this particular project, but I don't know if you all have any comments to add to that.
I think it was important to have bus access, so the city bus stop is directly across on the, where the hill crests. I also think that Children's First and Community in Schools have family resources right there because there are already two modulators on that campus that service families in many, many ways. So, in our thought pattern, it's a one-stop shop for families, and they'll know there are resources there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think this is very exciting.
Me, we do, too.
So, thank you for your work, all of you.
Thank you, Marsha, for being here.
My pleasure.
You didn't know you were going to be the featured speaker, did you?
I guess not. Happy to do it.
Thank you. At this time, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. At this time, we'll, there are no public comments tonight.
That's correct.
We'll move to the action agenda, and the first item-
Did I do some wrong?
Okay. The first item on the action agenda is the 1819 Board Amendment, Budget Amendment, number 19, number nine, engine, engine, number nine.
How can we be up to number nine?
Sorry?
How can we be up to number, Budget Amendment number nine?
It's from last fiscal year.
Oh, it's from last fiscal year, okay.
You haven't done Budget Amendment number one on this fiscal year yet.
Do you folks have questions for Ms. Frisbee? After she's walked all the way down. I will let you guys know that we don't have a budget from the General Assembly, and speaking of working on faith, I believe that's where we are.
Uh-huh. It is?
So, questions from the board about this budget?
So, this is just really about closing out last year, it's not about this year.
Yes, it is. As you recall, when you all approved Budget Amendment number eight on June the 27th, I mentioned that we have a two-month arrears period. So, during that time, there's still transactions that impact the 1819 fiscal year, so this is pretty much just to clean all that up. So, it's in good order for our auditors, who will be in the House next week.
She says with a smile on her face.
Absolutely. I love them.
Question, any other, any questions or comments? Thank you for coming on down.
Absolutely.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve-
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we move to TC Robertson High School, request for grading easement at 64 Long Shoals Road. Mr. Fairley is not here, so our illustrious attorney is going to manage this.
Thank you for that introduction. Board members, this, I believe, came on the agenda last month, and you had some questions, and this is basically a property developer on 64 Long Shoals Road adjacent to an exit at TC Robertson High School, has requested a sewer easement to hook into this MSD sewer line, as well as a potential temporary grading easement to grade a small portion of our property, about a 10-foot setback on the northern and northeastern corner of their property that touches the campus of TC Robertson. As you'll see in your board packet, you will, there is a letter from the project architect and project developer, Mr. Josh Williams, answering some of the concerns and questions that you all had last year, including a new drawing of the sewer line and where the sewer line placement will go. I also believe that Mr. Williams and his project engineer, Mr. Day, are here, too, to answer any questions. If you gentlemen want to come on down, please feel free, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can as well. And I know there were some questions on DOT entrance, entrance, and the impact the entrance would have on traffic, and I do believe Mr. Day has prepared some information for you as well, if you want to hear from him first.
Sure.
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Chris Day. I'm with Civil Design- I'm with Civil Design Concepts here in Asheville. I'm actually joined, this is not the developer, this is Chris Smith with Beverly Grant. He's also working on this project. And we thought, you know, both wanted to come down here for anything else that you might have questions on. As Mr. Chatley said, the, wanted to clarify, this grading easement, it is within the property setbacks of the TC Robertson property, but it is, it's really just a temporary easement. So the way the topography falls off onto our site, we have the ability to build a retaining wall there between the properties. But as the TC Robertson property then continues to fall away, there's an opportunity to just grade that slope out and eliminate that retaining wall. So it'll be more aesthetically pleasing on our end. It'll also facilitate any future development on the TC, the school property by not having that wall there, so that it's not limited there. The sewer, there is an existing sewer line from the home that's always been there, that bisects the TC Robertson property. So the easement that we're requesting actually reroutes that back down towards Long Shoals Road and places that sewer easement within an existing DOT utility easement that prohibits any building construction. And so, just kind of cleans up an existing situation that's there today. As for the DOT, the DOT has sent us correspondence stating that they find the project has adequate ingress and egress, and that they will provide formal approval of our access point. Right now, it's being held up a little bit because of drainage. We, currently, the site drains onto the TC Robertson property, and we're proposing to tie into the storm drain the DOT has in Long Shoals Road that goes the other way. And DOT is just questioning us and wanting us to make sure that there's adequate capacity to go that way. So we're clearing that up, but feel confident there's, it's just a matter of some details. I know there were some questions about traffic, and if a traffic study had been done. This project is rather small in nature. It's proposed to be an office, I think, maybe 7,500 square feet total. The way the DOT, as well as the City of Asheville, look at traffic concerns, we all recognize there's traffic concerns coming in and out of the school during the morning and after school time periods. The city has this look at projects. The DOT has really large thresholds for when they require a study. The city actually has lower thresholds of about 100 peak hour trips. This project proposes, by the transportation standards, to only generate about 11 to 12 peak hour trips. So in that 4:30 to 5:30 range is when the traffic manuals state that with this use, office use, the primary peak trips are between 11:30 and 12:30 in the afternoon, or in the, technically, kind of in the morning around lunchtime, and then also at 4:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon. That being said, the trips are rather few and far between for the type of use that's being proposed there. So I know I kind of rambled a little bit there, but if there's any specific questions that I can answer, or Chris Smith can answer in regards to the project, we're more than happy to do so.
So is it premature for us to be voting on this when the stormwater, there are still questions about the stormwater? I mean, might this come back to us and need to change again after you finish talking to the county?
No, the stormwater aspect is really just a, basically, with how our DOT is set up, a lot of the stormwater components associated with DOT approvals have to go to Raleigh. They take a little bit more time. So the local office has full authority to grant the access. But as we're proposing a stormwater encroachment, which, there's stormwater pipes the DOT currently maintains in Long Shoals Road, we're proposing to tie into those. And that goes through a whole different department, but they kind of umbrella everything under the standard driveway permit. So, no, it's not a, it's not an issue, and it's not anything that would change either the sewer easement we're asking for, or the grading easement we're asking for. It's a different, different situation.
Questions from the board?
So I think I understand now, so as I'm looking at the map, the purple lines.
Yes, sir.
The one that's, I'm assuming this is oriented to the north, it's going north back towards TC Robertson, is the old sewer line you were talking about? Is that correct?
So.
It's no longer going to be?
No, I think that's really just kind of an artifact from the drawing that's trying to highlight where the property lines are.
Okay.
And in fact, the current line, the house sits about the middle of the property, and the current line goes directly over to the TC Robertson egress drive. It basically splits that property.
So it's going, moving to the right as I'm looking down on this map?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that, that other purple line there is not tied into anything with this proposal or?
Those purple lines are really just trying to highlight where the existing property lines are on the exhibit that the architect prepared.
But the one, I mean, it's, it's, okay, now I see it, I think.
Does the blue line is the sewer?
The blue line is the sewer.
The blue line is a proposed sewer line?
Right.
Currently, where that, that blue line, you see that it comes across in the middle, and then we're showing it kind of going, turning 90 degrees and heading straight towards Long Shoals.
Correct.
Today, it goes straight through the property.
Just keeps running in that direction.
And goes, yeah. But it, there is, while it's done that for, I guess, since that house has probably ever been there, there was never a legal easement in place to do so. And with it being a, now having a business, we want to upgrade that line to a more suitable line and clean it up by bringing it up to the front of the property.
So the only other question I have, you probably can't answer. Would that be correct, Mr. Chatley, in relation to who's going to pay for what?
I think that would be correct.
Because I've got two different pieces of information presented to me. One, the developer will pay associated costs for easement, including fees incurred by Buncombe County Schools for attorneys and staff. And then I have one from Mr. Driscoll and Mr. Williams that says, grading easement and utility access should not exceed $2,500. Fees in excess of this amount should be brought to the attention of both the school board and Mr. Williams for review and consideration. I'm not sure how best to proceed when I've got two different things.
It's my understanding, and I'll let Mr. Chatley clarify if he's privy to more information. It's my understanding from the client that they intend for the school to not incur any cost on this, that all the costs would be covered by the developer here.
So why does it not say that in the memo? I don't understand why they didn't just say that.
Well, I think the, you know, with all due respect, I think the architect wrote this letter, and it's more of a legal document that needs to be written in terms of ensuring that legally, the developer is the one committing to pay for this. And we're not looking for the school board to incur. We welcome any condition or modification that Mr. Chatley proposes to ensure that that is indeed the case.
And that's, and as kind of I mentioned to you before, and after I went back and read this, though, I'm thinking, well, maybe the architect was just simply trying to put some really high cap on what the legal fees would be, and certainly, $2,500 is a high cap on legal fees. The problem is, you kind of read it, and you're like, well, does that just include legal fees, or does it also include the survey? Because $2,500 would not pay for a survey. Most likely, or certainly not that, and other costs. And I think the architect just didn't maybe clarify that very well. But I certainly am comfortable saying, if the board wants to approve this tonight, that they approve it subject to the developer paying for any of the board's costs, and we can work that out.
I'll echo, we, from the Beverly Grant construction contract standpoint, we have the surveying work for this covered in our contract with the owner. So I'd feel comfortable saying that as well, Chris, that although he's not here tonight, I know he intends to pay for the survey costs too. Yep.
Thank you. I'm comfortable supporting it with the language that's in the recommendation from Mr. Fairley.
Absolutely.
In terms of a motion.
And this does say, Mr. Williams will provide for fees and/or costs associated with the granting of the grading easement and utility access that should, which does sound like sort of legal.
Potentially, yeah.
Legal cost rather than the actual grading itself, but, yeah. It's not that I'm a lawyer.
I have one more question, if I may. And that is in terms of the grading easement itself.
Yes, sir.
Basically, what I believe to be the case is you're wanting to avoid having the wall and a handrail there, and that's fine. And really, all you're asking is just want to re-sculpt the property to a point where it will meet the guidelines by code of what the slant or slope must be. And in order to do that, and to achieve that, you would have to come across our property line into the setback of 10 feet off the property line toward our side to do that. And in one of your letters, it alludes to the fact that in doing that, you would blend the property, you would have plantings and that kind of thing, make it look seamless, and all that sounds very nice. The only, the other thing, I just want to, I guess, get to the question, is you made comment of temporary easement. And temporary easement, to me, means just that. We allow you to come in there, move some dirt, meet the criteria that you need to meet to avoid having to do the wall, you put some plantings there, done deal, you have no more interest or control of that property. So down the road, in eight years, when you have a whole new board setting here, and that property becomes possible use for some other purpose, we don't want to be handcuffed, don't want to handcuff a future board by some easement that basically would stop them from maybe being able to develop that area. Maybe they need to regrade that. It's still a setback, they're not going to build on it, but they may need to regrade it. And I don't want to do anything, or I'd have trouble supporting this if, in fact, we're somehow limiting future use by Buncombe County Schools. So can you speak to your quote temporary, what's your vision of the temporary easement to be?
Yes, exactly what you, the, your description is what we are seeking here. I think, once again, as the architect sort of started this process, as being very typical in a contractual situation, the developer will hire the architect, I get to work underneath the architect. And so sometimes there's a little bit of a loss of communication. So I feel like the architect, in terms of trying to convey these items, did not specify that really the need for this easement is just simply temporary. It's just during grading. There is no need for future encumbrance on the school's property.
So you don't feel like we need to record this in a deed? And I'm turning to our attorney, Mr. Chatley, if they're satisfied?
No, I do.
I'm frantically looking for something on his computer.
We do something very often with NC DOT. They will have a project where they'll come in and they'll ask for an amount of permanent right-of-way that they'll need for future maintenance. And then they'll also ask for an additional temporary construction easement to allow the work to kind of occur. And then that, and I'll defer back to Mr. Chatley on how that then goes away, but there's an allowable time period where our developer in this situation, DOT, in the example that I was given, has rights to grade on that property, but then there's no permanent encumbrance there. It's just for the means of making those grade changes.
And I concur, and that was kind of the same example I think I used when we were in work session. So ultimately, the easement would be recorded, the temporary construction easement language would probably be in the sewer easement, in the same document, and would allow just for the construction of that during a temporary period, and then ultimately no more. And it would not, since it's all within the 10-foot setback, it would, at no point in time later on, inhibit the board, prohibit the board from developing that portion of the property, if that's what the board decides to do in the future.
Very good.
You also could make the argument that if we were to put the retaining wall in, which is what is in our current plans, if we do not get the grading easement, although that wall would be on the developer's property long-term, it could be problematic to excavate behind that wall on the Robertson side. And so you could actually, if the wall was there, I think it would actually inhibit the property more than if the grading easement was issued, because you would undermine that wall if you wanted to lower the grade on the Robertson side. If that makes sense. The example that Chris mentions, I have one of those going on right now up in, outside of the Weaverville area, where one adjacent property owner built a retaining wall because they were down, they were lower, and the adjacent grade was beside them. As that property, two years later, decides to become developed, they are now faced with having a wall, and we're ending up with kind of this peak in between two low sites, where they're trying to negotiate the fact that if that wall wasn't there, it would greatly facilitate that, so.
Would that we could see in the future?
Do what?
Would that we could see into the future.
Right.
For many reasons.
Other questions from the board?
So I'm still trying to figure out if we're actually changing the language between these two letters. I just feel like there's an awful lot of assumptions and intentions, and I personally don't want to assume somebody's intentions who's not even here this evening. Is that an attorney question?
Yes, it is. I had a map up, let me pull back up the... So what, board members, what I would encourage you, if you were looking to adopt the recommendation, I would encourage you to adopt the recommendation in Mr. Fairley's memorandum, which is the first page in your board packet. Subject to attorney review, granted 10-foot grading and sewer easement along the northeast property line. The developer will pay associated costs for the easement, including fees incurred by BCS and its attorneys and staff. So my recommendation is that that is what you approve, and if there's something that occurs that is outside of that approval, then we will bring it back to you.
Is that satisfied?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would make the motion that we re-approve the request for grading easement at 64 Long Shoals Road, with the proper stipulation and the recommendation from Mr. Fairley, that the developer will pay all associated costs for the easement, including fees incurred by Buncombe County Schools for attorneys and staff.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris, will you tell your parents hello for me?
I will.
Thank you. It's good to see. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda is the minutes from the regular open session, a personnel report, advisory council members for 1920, and advisory council request to add members. And then we have a list of policies for second reading. 7100 is recruitment and selection of personnel. Licensure is 7130. 7300, did I say that right? Our staff responsibilities. 7610 is defense of employee, boarded employees. 7730 is employer, employee conflict of interest. 7920 is reduction in force. And 7940 is certified personnel suspension and dismissal. I would entertain a motion to approve the items in the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have an information agenda, which includes 1920 yellow bus list and the online attendance policy, 4400R. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Without objection, I think we're going to adjourn. I need to ask the following people to report to the superintendent's office. That would be Doris Sellers, Antonia Robinson, and Steve Earwood. And you have all made terrible mistakes, and we are going to be discussing those mistakes in the executive conference room.
Throw Jan Greenhoe in there too.
Okay, Jan Greenhoe, you get to come to the party. Are y'all running to go? It's like being called to the, I'm telling you, it's just like being called to the principal. Oh, it's over.